Some things never change, even if I'm not there.
Okay, we're on. All right, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for October 2nd, 2023. I am Eric Eldridge, the Chair. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon FiOS, and is a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. Seeing none. After instruction from the state fire marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. With that, I ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to start with Board introductions, starting with our remote Select Board member, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening, Ron Cohen.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnackert, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Ron Schneider.
Good evening, Mike Moran, Vice Chair.
Good evening, Katerina Kelibokis.
Good evening, Colin Loizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Catherine Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Okay, let's start with the meeting minutes. For the regular session meeting minutes, can I get a motion?
I move that the Select Board approve the regular session meeting minutes for September 18th, 2023.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Cohen.
In favor.
Mr. Schneider.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor, that carries 5-0-0. All right, citizen in business time. Any citizens wish to address the Board? Seeing none. We are going to move the town manager's report because he has to be here anyway for the entire meeting. We'll push that down to a little bit later. And we'll jump right into the public hearing. A modification of special permit for Tingsboro Sports Center at 500 Potash Hill Road. Who is going to be? Thank you, Colin.
Absolutely. While they get set up, I'll give a quick introduction. In your packet this evening is a request for a site plan special permit modification from the Tingsboro Sports Center at 501 Potash Hill Road, MAP 21, Lot 23-1, to add a 7,000 square foot parking lot, which would contain an additional 38 parking spaces, to a plan that was previously approved by this Board as a part of their original special permit on December 14th, 2015. As a part of our review of the application, we've requested comments from various departments with jurisdiction on this type of request. The Conservation Commission noted that the applicant will need to file for a major stormwater permit, and the Board of Health has indicated that they will need to do a plan review for the birthday room and any food-related areas, including food storage, which is another component of the request to add to the original square footage in their Phase 2 build-out, which they'll go into more detail about. The applicant has been notified of these comments. We also did forward their application to TEC, which is the peer-review firm that the town uses. They had some minor comments which were sent to the applicant a few weeks ago, and I will turn it over to Mr. Nokosia to walk the Board through the specifics of their request.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, appreciate you seeing us tonight. With me is Ryan Wickens, Principal of Tingsboro Sports Center. Doug Lee is the engineer on the project. I'm almost the head of Tingsboro Sports Center. I don't think any of you were on board at the time back in 2000, late 2015 when I was here the first time you got this project approved by this Board. You well know this business, it's one of our flagship businesses here in Tingsboro. Historically, had their location in progress out. They eventually grew out of that space and built the campus that they currently operate now, the Potash Hill Road, which is a great project, which I know you're all familiar with. And since that time, the applicant repurposed the old project, but used the demand now justified and physically took it on the path of the soul.
Realistically, the only reason we're here is we're tweaking the project a little bit. We already have full approval for a 63,000 square foot Phase 2 expansion, as is depicted on the plans. However, the modification is seeking an additional 7,000 square feet to make it a 70,000 square foot addition in Phase 2, which will house three additional turf fields, as well as three additional birthday party rooms effectively. There will be increased parking, you know, all of the site amenities that go with that. It'll eliminate the use of the outdoor field in the back. The side outdoor field obviously remains as-is, but it will allow the applicant to, you know, meet the demands. So, as Colin had mentioned, I did review all of the Selectments Packet File. All of the departmental comments were favorable. I didn't see any negative comments. We're aware of, you know, additional permitting review for the stormwater management permit from ConCom, as well as having the Board of Health take a look-see at the plans before the food service starts. So, you know, we'll obviously follow up in that in the due course before we apply for an actual building permit. I did see TEC's comments. To me, they appear to be largely ministerial in nature, some plan edits, things of that nature. Doug Lee's, I'm sure, will either speak to those issues tonight or provide a letter responding to those issues to address that, but I don't see it as anything substantive, more ministerial. So, I know that you, this Board, this town, has been a great public partner to champion some of our flagship businesses here in town. You've been very supportive of the Tingsboro Sports Center over the years, and as you well know, the Tingsboro Sports Center has been very supportive of this community over the years in various activities. So, this will strengthen that public-private partnership and provide additional space for services for the town's residents and very important recreational activities. And we did all the heavy lifting back in 2015. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Doug Lee's to talk about the site plans.
Thank you. Doug Lee's from Land Engineering and Environmental Services. I'm just going to walk over to the Board. This is just the same prints I handed out to you, the same plans that were in the set. I just highlighted some things to make it easier to see. This is the existing condition plan. This is what's out there. This is the driveway coming in from Potash Hill Road. Splits off, there's a parking lot down here. This is the turf field. This is the existing building, kind of highlighted in brown. This is the existing pavement, this is the parking. This is the grass field that's next to the existing building, and the detention pond is down here. This is 36 Old Ting Road, that Ting Sports Center has also acquired. We'll be adjusting the lot lines. The lot lines as they exist now are shown in green, and I will be providing, we'll be providing an A&R plan, well, I didn't want to come out, to reconfigure the lot like this, so that the screen area can come part of the project. This area we had, some of the use of the project, but it's actually behind the house, so that they're using, you know, with the house. So that is the, this is the actual algebra plan that was submitted after the project was done. So it's the existing digits as they, as they sit. The second sheet I gave you was the layout plan. And it shows here the existing building again. And this light-hatched ground is the approved, already approved Phase 2 building, the 63,000 square foot building that was approved back in 2015.
Yes.
So this area that's in the dark brown would be the proposed addition, you know, a much more building we're looking for. It's about 25 feet of additional building. This area that's hatched with the gray striping is the approved parking lot that was approved as part of this building expansion. With the building moving over a little bit, and with the shift in the lot line, the new parking lot's going to wrap around, so it'll provide more, an easier accessibility. The proposed parking lot was off the existing parking lot, it's kind of you had to pull in and drive around. This one, it'll be, the aisles will continue right through, so it'll be more accessible.
So that acre and a half of land, plus or minus, was acquired after the original approval. So, it kind of provides a pathway for this, a little extra expansion.
It gives about 30, 38 additional parking spaces of what was previously approved. Switch to the rating plan. See, right down in this area, highlighted in blue is the approved detention pond. It was built pretty close, it's actually a little bit bigger than it was approved. And there was a second pond that was going to be underneath the parking lot, one of the buried ponds with the buried chambers and the stone. Part of having the extra, extra land, we're going to have to make the whole pond open, so it's easier to maintain, you don't have to worry about a buried pond under the parking lot, there's maintenance issue underneath that one. They're pretty reliable, but it's just easier to maintain if it's open, if it's an open pond. So this pond that's under the parking lot has been taken out, this pond has been expanded to a kind of a little bit of extra pavement, a little bit of extra roof runoff, and to remove the park, the pond from under the parking lot. There's a stockade fence proposed along the property line to the south, and there's some parallel parking spots proposed, so that there's an existing driveway coming through. We had to make sure the driveway level with lighting, because people have been parking there, so we figured we might as well make a ladder, stripe it, have an actual parallel parking, so they have enough room, so it's not, not an issue moving forward. I think the last plan is the utility plan. There's really nothing that changes on the utility plan except for the ponds that I just covered. The building already has sewer and water, the existing sewer and water service to the new building. We provided a landscape plan, showing planting of new trees around the new pavement, you know, all the existing trees that are out there is part of the previous approval, so we just be carrying that landscaping forward. I think that was the red maples maybe, the honey locusts. We provided a photometric plan with the lights to show that there's been no lighting leaving the site, even not accounting for the fence, and the lighting, the photometric showed the lighting doesn't extend beyond the property line. And I think probably a lot of the problems here is from next door, so I figured I'd print out the GIS. This is the existing building. This is the field where the new building's going to be going, and then this is the existing detention pond is right here, so the new pond will be shaped like this. This is mass praying. Here is Maple Ridge. These are the apartment buildings, the two apartment buildings that are there. This is where the fence would be going right between here. The lot lot basically runs like that, and it comes up here. These are the existing houses. This is a separate unit, this is actually a condo, I don't know if people remember that and all that. So this is, I don't remember the unit number. Mass Crane is one unit, Tingsboro Sports Center is another unit, and there's a vacant lot here, that's Unit 3, that's really just a vacant lot. That's left behind the existing houses. This is the small detention pond here, and their detention pond, I think, is in this area, but I don't remember, it's been a long time. So, the comments we got, they were adding some details to the plans, some construction details. The town did a good job of coming up with a handbook of all different, the construction details that they wanted the plan set, so we're still using that little detail sheet we have to incorporate some of theirs, and I think there was some spot elevation they were looking for around the handicap ramp, so to make sure that they work when they go to level. With small stuff like that, we'll have to get a new set of plans, but we didn't do that because we wanted to go here first and see if there's been any comments, so we tried to incorporate everything in at once. The proposed Russian plans, in, you know, two days before the hearing.
Mr. Chair, before the Board. Yeah, we need to open the hearing. So, yeah, just sorry about that. We jumped right in, but can we open the public hearing?
I move that the Select Board.
My fault.
Open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Mr. Chair, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Cohen.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor. Carries 5-0-0. Now, we're good.
Do you want to rewind and do that all over?
Yeah, can you do that all over, just start? Go ahead, sorry to interrupt.
No, I mean, I think that was a stopping point. If you have any questions or any specific issues you want to look at, but Mr. Nokosia said it was previously approved, and the changes are added, this little bit of parking, and actually, you see the dark gray here, this is the new pavement. This area was all previously approved, so this is the new parking, and this little area is the new building, the new pond, so it's all an open pond, excavated from the pond.
So I'll ask the Board if there's any questions before we see if anybody from the public would like to ask any questions. But we'll still have deliberations, don't worry too. Okay? Anybody from the public would like to ask questions or speak on the proposed project? Seeing none? Okay. Any questions that you'd like to ask at this point in time?
Straightforward plan.
The, so the only question that I had in the, some of the things as far as setbacks, there was something from TEC on that, just.
They wanted a summary table show what all the setbacks were proposed and allowed, and we checked, they're all, they all meet their requirements.
So that was going to be my next question.
We're going to add the table to the plans moving forward, yeah.
No variance required.
Yeah, we've already added the plans on the computer, so next time we print them on, it'll be.
Perfect. Because, yeah, that's what I wanted to.
I look at those comments, again, as administrative in nature.
Yep, they do a good job, you know?
Good.
They ask the good things.
We like it when they do a good job. Mr. Cohen, I know you're remote. Any questions from your perspective?
No questions at this time.
Okay. So if there's no questions, do we want to close the public hearing?
I move that the Select Board close the public hearing.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Cohen.
In favor.
Mr. Schneider.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor, that carries 5-0-0. All right, we ready to deliberate? Do I have any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Cohen, anything from you?
No questions, no concerns.
Okay.
The only question I have is just timeline, like a proposed opening date?
Probably next fall. We're hoping to get the foundation in before the winter and then construction in the spring, so, yeah, next fall.
Great. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Select Board grant the modification of the special permit to add 7,000 square feet and an additional 38 parking spaces to the plan previously approved on December 14th, 2015.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Cohen.
In favor.
Mr. Schneider.
In favor? In favor.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, that carries 5-0-0.
Appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Congratulations, good luck, look forward to it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Next item. Joint meeting with the School Building Committee. Middle school project update. Do we want to have the folks come up, reopening a meeting, I understand? Tony, do you want to open a meeting and?
No, we're not actually going to formally open. Yeah, they don't, they don't have to.
No, we thought they were, and that's, you don't. Perfect, all right. Come on up.
And David, I'll disconnect so that you can reconnect.
All right, David, I will let you lead us at this point, and then we'll, I'm sure there'll be some questions that come about, so.
I will.
Take it away.
I will need a moment before I could lead to make the connection.
That's fine, would you like us to?
Take a minute.
Take a minute amongst yourselves, that's fine.
Are you feeling declined?
Yes. And let us know if you need a, any help in connecting up.
It says it's connecting.
Sometimes we have some challenges with that. There we go.
All right. Right. All right, thank you for having us here tonight. Last time we were here in front of you was March 30th, 13th.
And for the audience at home, did you want to introduce yourselves?
Oh, I'm sorry. David Sandon from Left Field, owner's project manager, and with me is Chad Lequere.
Good evening, Chad Lequere, Project Manager, Fontaine Brothers.
Apologies, I feel like we know each other.
Yes, we do.
All right, so last time we were here was March 13th of this year. We are actually going to pass on this, but topics we presented and discussed last time we met were cost drivers. I'm not going to get into details of what the cost drivers were back then, because they remain the same, and essentially, the market has spoken. Back then, we did provide some escalation statistics in the construction market. We have an update tonight. We compared Tingsboro Middle School to other MSBA projects. We have an update tonight. The evolution of value engineering, about four-plus million has been valued engineered to date on the project. The DOR application, we presented how that was going to work on the 13th. We followed that procedure. That application is going to be signed tonight and ready to be issued tomorrow. At that time, we provided a recommendation on how to move forward, which included that DOR application, and we proceeded in that manner. We talked about a roadmap to town meeting, which we have an update. Regarding permitting, we're out of the permitting business. Material lead time update, the switchgear and the generator was pre-purchased by this project team. And as far as construction progress to date and look ahead, Chad will provide us an update. So, this is a snapshot of time. This was taken off of the Bureau of Labor Statistics. It's a producer price index. It's a little bit different than a consumer price index, which has all different indices together. So this is focused, this is just on the K through 12 market. And what's interesting, when you look at this timeline, it took 11 years for the index to rise 50 points from 2006 to 2017. These are in two-year increments. And when you look at the timeline from 2021 to 2023, in a matter of two years, we went 50-plus index points. So, you know, this is just, again, unprecedented. No one really saw this happening. And then this is the same data, just in a different format. And again, the takeaway is that over 14 years, the average percent change was 3%, and in a matter of two years, it was 27%. 16 one year and 11 the following year. And again, this is a chart from the same website, Bureau of Labor Statistics, just a blow-up version, just to kind of show the timeline of, the project was established in December of 2021. We had our May town meeting in '22, and it continued. Last Select Board meeting was the 13th of March. Again, at this point, the experts in the industry were saying it's going to level off, this cannot be sustained. Obviously, we've seen it sustain. We had just now seen prices starting to level off, not necessarily in every facet of the industry, but again, in certain areas, we're seeing it level off. We then compared our project to other projects somewhat in the Tingsboro area of the Commonwealth. And you can see that Tingsboro has the lowest variance from project budget to the GNP or anticipated GNP budget. We're at 7.31%, and this is a better visual. Obviously, we have the two projects, these two are in Lawrence, this is an Andover project, Lowell, which I'm sure everyone's familiar with, Groton and Pittsburgh, I believe. But we, you know, there's 30 projects that were affected, more than 30, but 30 MSBA projects in the MSBA capital pipeline. And, you know, I wanted to look at the projects that are somewhat in this geographic area. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the campus canopy and the softball field, because I think throughout the course of the project, this has been a topic of discussion, so I just wanted to go down a little bit of kind of memory lane, we'll say. So the campus canopy and the softball field, they were always part of the project from day one. They were presented leading up to and at town meeting in May of '22. In August of '24, 2022, the pre-design development phase, basically before design development took off, Fontaine, the CM, they did a early estimate, basically right when they got on board. At that time, the campus canopy and the softball field were identified as potential value engineering opportunities. The campus canopy was categorized as a Phase 1 VE, which means once, you know, you make the decision, you know, you can't go back. And the softball field was categorized as a Phase 2, where you don't, you don't have to make the decision right away. At that time, the committee voted to accept all Phase 1 VE items except the campus canopy. So at that time, both of these elements of the project were still in the project. Then on November 30th, later in that year, during the design development phase, the committee roughly approved 1.75 million in VE. The campus canopy was discussed, again, as a VE opportunity, and the committee discussed accepting, removing the campus canopy, except proceeding with the foundations and the electrical conduit. The rationale at the time was that if bids come in lower, the market suddenly shifts. The canopy would still and could still be installed, and that decision was supported, or was to support, the continued design of the foundation and for early scope release packages. Because if the decision was not to move forward with the foundations of the conduit, and the decision was made to put it in later, later would cost more money. So that was the rationale at that time. The softball field was decided to proceed as a general field, so sod and irrigation, but not what I would call softball field-ready. On December 1st, the VE was adjusted and approved by the committee, shared with the committee, made part of the meeting minutes. So, just a little history of the canopy and the softball field. And to date, the foundations and the electrical conduit work are complete, and the value that is in the ground is about $160,000. So, the next two slides are two options, A, not recommended, and option B, recommended. For a few of you, this will look familiar, so I won't spend too much time on option A because this is not what was recommended by the building committee. But high level of the anticipated, this is the anticipated GNP compared to the control budget. Just quickly on how this works, this is the original budget. These are budget changes. Obviously, we move money around, but it hasn't increased or decreased. So the revised budget, 82,530, is the same as it started. This is the costs that are beyond the budget, so this is the anticipated cost of completion, and here is the variance. Okay? Essentially, this is, this includes the softball field and the campus canopy, but no utilization of owner's construction contingency. Okay? So by doing that, there would be a tax impact here. It would vary from around $4 to $8, depending on what bracket your home value would fall into. Okay? I'm going to skip, I'm going to move on to the next slide, but we can come back to the slide if you'd like. So option B, same kind of budget mechanics and how the budget works, but we are utilizing, excuse me, we are going to be utilizing $393,000 of construction contingency. So what that does is essentially, rather than having a variance of $5 million, it brings the variance down to 4.6, I'm rounding. Based on the anticipated mass save rebate of $475,000, and then the anticipated one-time relief funding that Senator Kennedy basically orchestrated on behalf of 30 MSBA projects, the initial anticipated relief funding for Tingsboro, Tingsboro has been reported at 4.1. Also including the original maximum MSBA grant, it essentially puts the anticipated tax impact at $54.5 million, which was the. at $54.5 million, which was the original tax impact that Mr. Matt Hansen utilized back leading into May of 2022 for that town meeting. So, essentially, this option is a zero tax impact, or it's a zero increase of a tax impact from May of '22. Any questions on this?
No, I think we'll let you go through.
We'll go through the, that's fine, that's fine.
I'm sure there's going to be questions. We'll let you go through and, you're on a roll.
All right. So, this is our recommendation. The rationale is it allows the town and Drakehead Water Supply District to continue with their discussions pertaining to the systems development fee. And just for clarity and transparency, within option A or B, we're not including that fee into this analysis. The project is, the project is able to deliver the campus canopy as originally designed and also the field, the softball field, as originally intended. And just as a reminder, the town meeting successful vote passage statistics was 86% at town meeting, and the ballot, it was 67%. The use of roughly $400,000 of owner's contingency does not pose a risk to the project. The project is roughly 93% awarded to date. When we were back here on March 13th, when we did our look-ahead timeline, we made an estimate that we were going to be 95% complete. So, we're pretty close for what's been awarded to date. The remaining awards have anticipated values that have been vetted by the construction manager, Fontaine. We have spent zero of owner's contingency so far on the project. As of today, there's no forecasted owner's contingency exposure either. Not to say there won't be some in the future, they will be, but as of right now, we've spent zero and our forecast is zero. Based on utilizing $400,000 of owner's contingency, roughly 3.3 million will remain. The project will approach the community preservation committee for endorsement of funding costs associated with the softball field amenities and approval at the May 2024 town meeting. I can't provide any more update beyond that comment, but others may be able to. And then, based on the original MSBA maximum grant, mass save rebate, and the state relief funding, and while the project needs, you know, we need to go to town meeting for approval to increase the borrowing authorization, again, there would be no additional tax impact. Okay? This is just a simplified graphic that I may use at town meeting rather than probably utilizing this one. And then, over the weekend, I was requested to look at providing some sort of a pie chart. So, here's the first. We'll say stab at the pie chart. Obviously, on the left is where we were at the May 2022 town meeting. The original tax impact, $54.5 million. The original MSBA grant, 28.1 million. I'm rounding, obviously. The total project cost, $82,530,000. The increase is about $4.6 million. Here is the increase here of the $4.6 million, 87,156. We have the mass save rebate. We still have the MSBA grant, and then the one-time relief funding. So, you'll notice that your tax impact as a dollar value is the same, but I don't want to confuse people, even though this says 66% and this is 62%, that's just a percentage on the overall total project. You know, I think the easiest way to understand why is there no tax impact or additional tax impact is, well, it's the mass save rebate and the one-time relief funding. You know, that was not in the original equation at the time of town meeting. So, for recommended, a recommended motion, so what you have on the screen, this was the motion that was taken at the Tinsborough Middle School Building Committee last week, Wednesday, September 27th. You can see that option B, there was a motion, and it was overwhelmingly passed at the Tinsborough Middle School meeting. And for tonight, we're looking for the Tinsborough Select Board to formally accept the recommendation from the building committee on option B with the values as indicated on the screen. One of the drivers for this is that we need to fill out the DOR application with a specific dollar value. We can come back to this if, okay?
We will.
And then, as far as road to town meeting, you can see where we are. And our next, you know, the DOR application has to be filed. I've already spoken to the, I think it's the Director of Accounts or, I spoke to the DOR. They said, once they have the application, it should take about three days to get approval. And then, obviously, you know, the town will be coordinating the warrant articles and so forth. What we have on the slide now is a draft informational flyer. We are currently waiting for the Ethics Commission to do a cursory review on this. This is, again, it's informational only, pending the Ethics Commission review of this. This will probably, we'll say, hit the street later this week. We'd like to start printing this tomorrow if we can. This is an example of what it would look like. It's an 11 by 17, same format that was used last year. You would open it up. The, open it up as such. You would have the construction progress to date. By the time people receive this, 100% of the steel structure will be up, the superstructure. And Fontaine put together a little bit of construction progress. We have a summary of Article 7, some photos, a comment that there would be no additional tax impact. The back, we have selective FAQs. This is only a sampling. There's a full list of FAQs. And one of the QR codes will take you to the website. The other QR code will take you right to the FAQs. And then, I will pass this over to Chad, and he can provide everyone with an update.
Thank you, David. All right. A quick construction update, look ahead. So, all of our foundations are complete at this point. As David mentioned, our big focus item right now is wrapping up structural steel. We got about a week, week and a half, the building will be erected. And then, leading into the rest of the months, probably right around the first November, all the detailing, welded connections and whatnot on the steel will be completed. In the background, Fontaine, J C J, Left Field are working on MEP coordination. And what that's going to allow us to do is get all of our MEP trades, electrical, fire protection, HVAC, out to the site, start working on their risers, putting in their sleeves for the slab on deck. And we're targeting a placement for that probably sometime mid-December. We'll be working, and we basically split the building up into three sections. Section A and C are the classroom wings. If you look on your screen here, that's A, C. And then, B makes up your gymnasium, your cafeteria, and some of the admin suites. So, again, big-ticket item right now is getting that steel buttoned up and getting going with the next trades out there, getting ready for slab placements.
We just have a similar picture, but from a different angle.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before you ask questions?
Of course.
Just a clarifying point. On both option A and B, David mentioned that we didn't include the service development fee. I did want the board and people at home to know that the project budget, which was already approved, include, approved, not improved, included what the project determined was a reasonable connection fee. So, it's not like there's no money in the budget to connect to the Drakehead Water District. We just are not suggesting that we add money to meet the systems development fee, which is in dispute.
Thank you.
Of course.
So, I guess before, I was going to open it up to Mr. Schneider, who's our representative on the middle school building committee, to see if you wanted to add anything or further clarify and...
So, I just, just one point of clarification, just so that people don't think we just got lucky. We went 4.2 over and we got 4.1 million, you know, from the Kennedy bill. I think it's, you can't emphasize enough the amount of VE work that was done to control the cost. While we were going through that crazy escalation, we did look for and find $4 million of additional savings.
Correct.
To the extent that it went beyond that, you know, yes, we're grateful that the Kennedy money will offset that with the mass save rebate. But I just don't want to underemphasize the amount of work that was done by that entire, you know, middle school building committee. You know, they've done a lot of work. They've tried to maintain or control the amount of cost overruns, you know, better than any of the other school districts in the area, you know? And I think that that should be emphasized, not only to this board, but to the town in general.
Without affecting the delivery of education?
Yes.
Or any of the programs?
Anything else?
No.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because I was going to mention that. Point of clarification, a couple of things. One, so, GMP, you mentioned it multiple times. I think it's important for the people here and the people at home. Do you want to explain what that is and why that's important?
So, the term or the acronym, GMP, apologies because I tend to speak in acronyms from the construction industry. It means guaranteed maximum price. And within that guaranteed maximum price, there will be holds and allowances. There's also CM contingency as well. So, while they will be change orders, you know, most of the time, from my experience, the change order is typically something that the owner has requested. Because again, we have allowances and CM contingency built in. Any unused allowances or holds or CM contingency will be returned to the town, returned to the project. So, a lot of times, what I want to remind people is that this is an authorization to borrow, a certain capacity to borrow. Working with Colin and the town and Catherine, depending on how they do their borrowing, once the project gets going, every month or two, we will do a budget or kind of a financial health check on the project. And at a certain point in time, we will do a forecast and say, we think the project is going to land at X. So, they may not have to borrow as much as what was authorized to borrow.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you continue.
Sure.
Sorry, David, can I see that little folded piece of paper?
Sure.
While we're finishing our questions. I just wanted to actually look through it. Thank you.
And actually, Dove, so first thing, you talked about contingencies, and I think it's important because we're talking about using some contingencies. And you talked about having 3.2, 3.3 million in contingencies that would still remain after option B.
Correct.
What is that from a percentage standpoint, and where does that fit from a health of a project standpoint?
Sure. So, how I always approach projects, and I'll use like a simplified figure. If there is $100 of work remaining to be put in place, work remaining, or we'll say, exposure, I always want the client to have $5 in their back pocket. So, that $5 represents 5% of remaining work or remaining work plus exposure. So, by utilizing roughly $400,000 of the owner's contingency, you're still probably around 5.6, 5.8% of what is remaining of work to be put in place plus exposure. So, from a health check, you're good. I don't want people to be concerned that, geez, we took $400,000 out of the project, but, you know, the project, the majority of the utilities are in. Not that the earthwork is 100% complete, but we're out of the ground. We had, we did have a few discoveries, we'll say, but we had allowances built in. I mean, we're in good shape.
Thanks. Relative to the handout, you said that there was an, so the ethics review is happening?
Yes.
I assume that that is to help to ensure that that information is factual, not an advocacy for one way or another. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is informational only. In fact, I even adjusted a few words here and there to make it, you know, just informational, state the facts.
And there is review that's happening at the state level to make sure that that is happening?
Well, I am not personally orchestrating that, but I'm told it is happening, so.
I'll get to you in a second. Hang on.
I like it.
The canopy, because I know there's been some questions from people. I've heard a variety of different things. But what we're talking about here is a campus canopy that connects the existing high school to the new building. And it seems to me that one of the things that was put in place was to reduce overlap in high-dollar infrastructure at the new school so that we, you know, if we had, let's say, the theater and auditorium, we had that at the high school. And we have some other things that are going to be in at the middle school and that we're going to be using both and sharing those. This is not just something where there's a cover for somebody standing out there waiting for a bus. This is a canopy to protect the people moving from the buildings because we now, we now have a more of a campus rather than two distinct buildings. Is that correct?
Correct. And I may not give this as much justice as Dr. Flanagan would, but they have shared programs, shared staff. You know, it's, it's, the buildings are close to one another. It's not like if you had to walk across the entire campus, you know, the next door to each other. So, this is a 50-plus-year project. I think if this was not to be done now, it would never be done. And I think it would be a regret not to implement it. I'm sure that there's middle school students that probably take some high school-level courses. And I'm sure that there's high school students that probably assist with teaching within the middle school along with the staff. And I don't...
Feel free. I just want to make sure that these things, so I hear things out there that may be misconceptions. And I just, this is one of the mechanisms by which we can clear those.
Yeah, you actually did a great job answering that, David. That was pretty good.
He's been paying attention.
We do share specialists on the campus. It really helps protect our school budget so we don't have to our teachers, to TV media teachers. We share resources back and forth. All our social emotional supports really work between the middle school and the high school on campus. We have students and staff with mobility issues that are required to travel between both buildings as well. And I think about 17, 15, 17 years ago, Mr. Messina will know better, but we went to a one-bus loop for the entire campus, a similar bell schedule. So, we truly do function as a campus. So, this just protects our students and staff going back and forth and really protects our school budget and keeps it down a little bit so we don't have duplicative positions.
Great. And then, the only other thing, you mentioned it relative to the softball field. So, that's, I think, 313,000 that we're allocating in there.
That's correct.
There's nothing precluding us, and in fact, we're recommending that we look to leverage CPC funds. This was just helping to ensure that with the loss of a softball field on the campus, that bare minimum, we're guaranteed to have something there. It's important for people to understand why we would want to go through and leverage CPC funds because if we borrow and if we use it as part of this project, we're taking on all those costs. If we go the CPC route, there's money that's coming from the state. So, we've already got that money allocated. We don't have to borrow as well. So, we have savings on not borrowing. The money's already allocated, and we get match from the state. So, it's definitely in our best interest. This is more just a, I guess, a very remote guardrail that if something happens and CPC or town meeting doesn't approve it at those, that we still help ensure that we're providing that bare minimum of a softball field to replace the one that was missed. Is that, that's correct?
That's correct.
I've said enough. I want to make sure I get those questions out. Absolutely, please.
No, just to clarify that point one step further. If the CPC agrees to fund that softball field, we put that contingency money back into the contingency pot. And to the extent it doesn't get used, it comes back to the town. And to the extent it doesn't get used, it comes back to the town.
That is correct.
So, that's a double benefit there.
Correct.
As I see it.
Thank you. Mr. Moran?
Just thank you to the school building committee for all the hard work and all the time, labor effort, the time away from either family or, you know, their own personal lives. It's very beneficial to see this hard work and very supportive of option B.
Select person Calabocas.
A lot of it has been covered already, which is great. Thank you for your time. I love this little pamphlet here. I know you just told me that you're not in charge of it, but I'm gonna ask you some questions.
I cannot take credit for that.
That's okay.
That was a team group effort.
Yeah, so it's a great little pamphlet. I like when you open it up and it has in bold right here, "The Article 7 will not result in an additional tax increase," in big in bold, right when you open it up. I think that's the number one question that I'm hearing from everybody. Okay, we see this presentation, we see a lot of numbers. What exactly does that mean for us? And most people want it in a simplified version like this pamphlet. I think that's perfect. I haven't myself had the opportunity to go to the frequently asked questions page. Maybe I should. But if it's not there already, whomever runs that page, maybe I could suggest putting something about the campus canopy, because like selectman Eldridge, that's all I hear debate about is why do kids need some covering while they're waiting for the bus? I didn't have that, and that's not what we're talking about here at all. So, maybe if there's some, an opportunity to do so, just to add maybe even a little picture about what a campus canopy looks like that isn't maybe, and how it's different than a bus shelter. I think that would be helpful. And we know that these, again, hopefully that we have, what, three weeks? We've got...
Three weeks from tomorrow.
We've got three weeks from tomorrow, town meeting. So, I know we have to go through ethics committees and all of the hoops, but the sooner we can get this out, the better, because the longer we leave people without answers at their doorstep, the more it's gonna go around. So, thank you very much for your presentation today and always, right? I think it was very thorough, and I look forward to continuing this project.
Okay. Select person Cohane. Do we still have you? He might be on mute.
I'll ask him to unmute.
While we're waiting.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Sorry about that. You got me now?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay. Okay. So, you've asked the vast majority of the questions I was going to ask. But the key thing, when I really look at this, the key message, just as selectwoman Calabocas said, you know, no taxes associated with this. And the one question, or just want to, not the question, but the statement I want to put out there, and some people, residents may be asking, then why are we going to town meeting with this particular warrant article? And the answer is, is the state, and correct me if I'm wrong, the state, they mandate that we have to have this borrowing for the full project dollar amount. Even though the state is gonna pay, as was discussed, the vast majority of that, that's the reason we need to go with another warrant article, is to cover the full cost of the project. And so, that is the reason why we're gonna go to town meeting with this. But again, it's no additional tax increase. The other topic that was discussed was the Drakehead Water. I also agree that we should not put anything else in there for Drakehead Water. We have tried to work with Drakehead Water over and over again. They have given us nothing back. What the fee that they are looking at is totally outrageous, it's ridiculous. We've talked to our lawyers. We feel we have a strong case. To tell the Drakehead Water we're gonna put aside X amount of money for this, I would totally disagree with. So, we need to clearly state that to the residents, but I do not think, and I agree with everybody, we should not put any more money associated from town meeting toward the Drakehead Water. And the last comment is for the softball field, I agree with what everybody said. Also, this is CPC funds. Softball field should be CPC funds. The state pays for, we've been averaging about at least half the state pays for, so why should we pay 100% through the school building committee when, you know, the state is gonna pay for half of it if we go through CPC? So, I will fully support going through and getting CPC funds for that. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Couple other things as we were going through. So, I don't want to throw a wrinkle into everything, but relative to motions and the information that's going out, it may be that this is not Article 7. So, one of the things that we need to talk about is going to be the order of articles. And so, we actually have to talk through about placing all the warrant articles. So, my question, I guess, to you folks is if we change it from Article 7 to Article 10, does that cause you any problems either by information that's already out there? I don't think most people know it is Article 7 yet, but...
I'm gonna say for the DOR application, no. For this motion, this motion can be easily amended. But once that hits the street, I'm sorry for pointing, but once the, once the mailer or the flyer hits the street, which it could be tomorrow, we could start printing. So, I, the sooner we know, the better.
I can guarantee you, you will know tonight, so...
Not a problem. It's all set. I'll keep it simple.
That I can guarantee you, because we will be closing the warrant this evening.
Okay.
That, we don't have any mechanisms by which we can delay that beyond next week, and this is our last meeting. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that we may, may have this discussion, we may do all those things, and I may change the number on you, and I don't want you to get mad.
No, we just started utilizing Article 7 probably a week ago.
Okay. Further questions from the board on this? So, I guess the, from a procedural question, do we, are we gonna, do we need to just deal with this when we're doing the warrant articles? Do you need us to have a motion before you leave? My understanding is that there was something that you wanted signed today.
8A.
Yes. So, procedurally, I want to make sure you have what you need.
No, this was, this was more done as a collective, kind of holistic courtesy between the building committee and the select board, somewhat understanding what lanes each committee or board stays in. And so, this does not have to be voted on right now, but what we do need signed tonight is the DOR application. But you've already accepted the report that I provided a couple of months ago. You have meeting minutes supporting that. We have a certified, you know, vote of those meeting minutes, so you can approve this later on.
And the DOR application is I am 7A under new business.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I was gonna say. So, we're gonna hit this as the next item anyway to approve this application? And there's no article number on that? Correct?
Correct.
Just the addition.
We just need to approve the option and what's gonna be there in that item. So, that's our next action item. So, before we get to that, similar to what my colleague said and what I said at the last NSBC meeting, 65 meetings, right, Mr. Tinnarella? That's a lot of meetings, a lot of work that has been done thus far. And that's, I mean, I don't even think that goes way back to 12 years ago and a lot of the things that were there. This board and many others appreciate all the work that the committee has done. It's a ton of stuff. In case people didn't notice, there's a couple of things that you slipped in there around value engineering, the extra 4.1 million, the foresight to look at, you know what? Let's remove the canopy, the largest amount of that cost in there, because things are going haywire. But let's not make the complete decision. And if we, when we get to the GMP final bids, we may be able to put it back in, which we're now able to do, thankfully. There's a lot of stuff that went into this, and it's not haphazard. There's a lot of thought that the committee put into it, and I want to thank the committee for those efforts. And I personally appreciate all of that. This wasn't something that, you know, just happened. There was a lot of work and thought that went into it. So, thank you to all the folks that are here and those that aren't here who've participated, because this is going to be another, I look at the elementary school people, we had a hard time getting that through, and people thought it was gonna be the worst thing ever. And I don't know of anybody that looks back on it and says, "Wow, I wish we didn't do the elementary school." This is gonna be another one of those wins for the town. 22 years later, we'll be looking at it going, "Wow, yeah, that was a good idea." So, thank you for the folks. Thank you for the presentation for, and we'll get into the warrant articles where people can find out more information. But I think we have what we need. Excellent. Well, thank you. So, now we can jump right into the...
Thank you.
Yeah.
We need to sign that paper.
Well, we gotta do the motion, and then we'll sign and do all that. So, can we ju, do you want to jump into 7A?
Yes.
New business?
Absolutely.
And you don't have to go anywhere, because we may have questions.
I'm gonna sit right back there. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
And if it makes sense, Mr. Chair, for the board, 7A and 7D are both the remaining items that deal with the school. 7D is just an easement, if we wanted to do that while they were here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, so 7A, the DOR form, which Jackie is circulating, so that Mr. Sandin can take that with him once the board votes. It's an application to the Department of Revenue, seeking approval of an amendment to the previously authorized debt exclusion for the middle school project. If approved by the Department of Revenue, this would allow the town to amend the previously approved debt exclusion by the amount of 4.6 million, as indicated in the town meeting warrant, without requiring an additional vote at the town election. This is allowed where the scope of the work tied to the original exclusion is not being substantially altered. So, if we get that approved tonight, there's a recommended motion in your packet, we'll have the board sign it, and as Dave indicated, he will submit that to DOR so that everything is taken care of before the town meeting vote.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Cohane, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board authorize the application to the Department of Revenue to amend the May 3, 2022 debt exclusion in the amount of $82,530,000 by increasing said exclusion by $4,626,000 to cover increased costs for the previously approved project.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. That carries 500. You're now allowed to sign. We'll sign it, we'll get you the next piece. You want to go to 7D? Jump right in?
Absolutely. This is a very quick one. Item 7D is the approval of an easement for National Grid Utilities at the new middle school. This is a standard easement agreement. I've reviewed previous easement agreements that the board has signed. This is standard boilerplate language. This is necessary, of course, for the utilities to be installed to power the new building. Included in the easement documents in your packet is a plan, if the board was curious, of where the new underground and overhead utilities will be. So, if the board will sign that this evening, we'll get a copy of it certified by the town clerk tomorrow and send that to National Grid to be recorded.
And just so you know, you're no longer presenting.
Correct.
So, I know when you were gonna show me something.
Nobody saw what I was saying, but it's a standard plan.
Questions from the board relative to the easement? Mr. Cohane, I want to make sure I ask you.
No questions.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that select board approve the easement grant to Massachusetts Electric Company or overhead and under, for overhead and underground utilities as presented.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor. That carries 500. Excellent. We've got that covered. We will get those signed. And I appreciate the patience for our next item, which is the Riverfront Park Eagle Scout Project Proposal. Mr. Collins, if you want to step up here? I appreciate your patience. Hopefully, you get to see some sort of civic work happening.
Thank you. Thank you to the school committee, the building committee.
My name is Thomas Collins, and I am a current life scout at Troop 28. Next to me is Ms. Sarah Axon. She is my Eagle advisor. I'm here to ask for permission or approval to build an outdoor fitness gym for my Eagle project at no cost to the town. Do you guys have the slideshow?
We do. We've got them here as well.
Oh, it's right there. Okay. So, what I want to build essentially would be a set of pull-up bars, dip bars, and a sit-up bar. There's also a walking path mapped out around the park, and I want to put in a sign that has the distance recorded on it, so people can know how far that is for what they're doing. It's also, everything there is also what is required to complete the fitness requirements for young ranks during scouting. I think this would benefit the community, because I don't think, I've noticed that there's other places in the town with these kinds of structures, but they're not, this one location I noticed, which is around the elementary school, which is on one side of the town, and it's not, that's far away for people who live on the other side of the bridge or people who just don't even know it's there, I guess. It's also a great spot. I think that Riverfront Park is super open and natural, very good for exercise, and it would draw more attention to the park. I also just believe in a lot of activity and working, working out to make sure to stay healthy, promote healthy lifestyles. I think it's a good location, and it would benefit the community for having everyone be a little more fresh. The next slide right here is, it's a concept of what I want to do. This is things people have actually done. So, that is similar to what I want to build. It's not exact, but it's a good reference I'd like you guys to look at. This is just a more, that pinpoint is, I circled it, yeah, you can see. So, I would want to put it right beneath the swing structure is where I'd want to place it. It's a nice open area, and I went there, down there, and I mapped it out. There's plenty of room if it would work there. So, moving on, that, I put in stakes in the ground to see how it would work if it was mapped out right where I wanted it. And so, the, we put me and my father put strings along the, along the stakes to see how it would look. You can't see it on the picture, but I did put in markings using an editing tool, and that's what it would look like if you could see the strings. And that's close to what it would look like, except the pull-up bar would be much higher. That is the footprint of what I'm looking at. It would only be, I wouldn't put in a border or put down any mulching. That wasn't the plan, but I just want you guys to know that it wouldn't exceed 225 square feet. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a large structure or be in the way. Those are the measurements for the posts themselves, which would be southern pine pressure-treated timber. It would, the product, it would not be higher than seven and a half feet. And the one on the side is the fence, is the signpost that I want to put in. That's where the bars themselves will be in the air, where it would look like if they're connected to the post that I want to put into the ground. And that's hopefully what it will look like when it's all finished. The gray is the bar and the brown is the post with the footprint and all the measurements mapped out with the sign in the back nearby. So, the safety issues that I'd like to go over, mostly during the construction of it, so it would be during, during my Eagle project, I would have volunteers from my troop, and I would have separate workdays based on age. The young, if they're under 14 years old, they can't, they can't attend when we are using power tools or handling the concrete. And I would provide, I would provide hand protection, eyewear, safety gloves, food, water for everyone working there in case it gets hot, and obviously, they'll be hungry. Also, bug spray, sunscreen, everything for the outdoors. I would also follow all the VSA guidelines, which I think is a very good standard to follow. Those are the materials I'll be using. It's, it's, yeah, sorry. Yeah. Everything I would want from it is commercially, the pull-up bars would be a commercial bought product, the timber is something I'd get from a hardware store, and everything else would also be from a hardware store. The timber is something I'd get from a hardware store, and everything else would be, also be from a hardware store. Those are the tools I'd use. The only thing that would be dangerous would be the saw and the circular saw and the drills. Everything else is hand tools, which is what I would use to construct this. So the total cost of all this, of all the, of everything I'd want to use would be about four hundred and fifty or four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, but I would, I would come up with all the funding for this. And that's, and there's extra money to the side for food, water, and the state equipment I'd provide as well. That is a more detailed plan of what I want to do for my project. I would start, there would be seven holes in the ground. It would be about one foot wide, a one-foot diameter, three feet deep. So that would leave room for the gravel and then the concrete for the fitting the posts. What I would do is I construct the structure before I set it in so everything was secure. And I'd set it in the ground and then add the concrete and let it, and add water for it to set. The setting, it's, it's fast setting concrete. It would be, the whole thing would be set before I leave. So there shouldn't be any issues with wet concrete lying around if I were to leave it there. It should be all completed by the time I leave the site. And then I just, after I'm done, I would inspect it and make sure everything's all fit together and make sure it's safe. That is, that is all I have, is the presentation I have. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Schneider, would you like to start?
I have three questions. One is, what are you gonna do for ongoing maintenance of the timbers and, you know, the things in, in years down the road? Because everything needs maintenance at some point.
Yes. So, the U.S. Department of Agriculture says that pressure-treated timber should last about fifty-four years. But in terms of that, I'll, in the, I can check up on it as well. I will be going to college soon. So that is one thing.
You're not gonna stick around for fifty-four years to keep an eye on it?
I'm not expecting you to do it, but, but is it something that you can leave to your troop that, that, you know, as, as part of their, you know, annual activities they go through and, and paint when needs to be painted or whatever?
I can speak with my troop and see if they're willing to do an annual fixer-upper, I guess, if that makes sense.
My second question has to do with mowing. You're not mulching that area. How does, that, that gets mowed by the town, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there gonna be an extra challenge for them to try to mow around all of those poles or?
Not really. Right now, there are already some play structures down there and some benches, which they'd have to weed whack around anyway. So this would just be a, and it's a small enough area that they could just weed whack around it.
That's fine. And then, and my last question, are you anticipating putting any kind of signage for the proper way to do a dip bar or to do pull-ups or whatever so that people do them in a, in a safe way? Is there like, you know, a picture or, or whatever?
I hadn't thought of that, but I'm not opposed to that at all. That's something I can easily add to the project. I'm not, I think it's a good idea. Yeah. I can do that, yeah.
Mr. Moran?
The only safety question I have really is just the operation of the heavy machinery. Hopefully there's some mentor or someone to help out if you're not familiar with the heavy machinery.
Yeah, that is correct. There'll be adults from the troop who will help me provide the equipment, and they will also not use it, and my father will be there, and he's very familiar with those.
Select person Calaboukas.
Great. Well, I love this. I think it's a great initiative. I think it's a thorough presentation. Thank you for putting it together. My one question probably to Colin is, how do we ensure, as much as I trust you, that everything is put together and safe?
My recommendation to the board would be if they're amenable to allowing this use on Riverfront Park, to vote tonight to allow the use and to direct me and the rec director and probably our town engineer to meet with Mr. Collins once or twice before the construction takes place to make sure that we're all on the same page about how it will be done. And also do a fine, like a post inspection to make sure. That will help us. Any of these structures that we put on public land, we have to add to our insurance roster. And so if we have town staff involved in reviewing it and making sure that it meets our insurance standards, that's just the best practice.
Thank you.
Select person Cohane. Anything, questions, comments?
Everybody asked the questions I was planning to ask, but I would just like to thank the, the scouts that came in front of us tonight. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Love the initiative and love the idea and anything we can do to help people exercise feel better. And thank you very much for bringing that forward to us.
Yeah, I, thank you for taking the initiative. That's, that's part of this, right, is, is learning how to take initiative and follow through, and I commend you on that. Glad to hear that, and I totally agree. I think we need to coordinate this with the rec department. So as you're aware, there is, we have some facilities at the elementary school. There, there's some lessons to be learned from that, what works, what might not work. I also want to make sure that we've got safety from kids, you know, that there's the adults that might be doing it, and we might need some safety training as well so we don't hurt ourselves, but making sure that the kids aren't impacted. The other thing that I'd like to look at is if through this process there are things that we in the town might need to do to help make it safer and be a little bit more complete, we should consider that. And I, you know, they can come back to us, and if we need to look at some funding and things like that, while I'm certainly appreciative that you're funding this. Having done this type of thing with like the baseball fields and having to do that, it, it can be a little bit more involved. I would encourage you to make sure that you have cut-resistant gloves and not just regular gloves.
Yes.
We can talk about that. I might be able to get you some. And I can tell you that having dug many footings here in town, there's a lot of really hard rock.
Yeah.
So, don't underestimate what it takes to dig a, a bunch of footings in there.
Yeah.
But I, I think if we can supervise and, and work collectively with you and collaboratively, I think that we can come up with something that's great. I think it'd be great to have something else on the other side of town. And again, I commend you for taking the initiative and coming before us. I know this can be, I hope you're not nervous. I hope that you see this as a welcoming environment. I'd like to see more people do that sort of thing and get involved with the town. So I, I hope that we're, we can support you on that.
Can I just add a couple of quick comments?
Please.
Okay. So, um, he has actually been working on this for quite a few months, so maybe, I don't know, maybe nine months, maybe a little bit longer. He has put a lot of thought into it. He's never wavered on what it was that he wanted to do. A lot of Eagle Scouts often go to the towns themselves and ask what their needs are. But because he's so involved in sports and the fitness requirement for scouts, and he's spent so much time in scouts, he's on the wrestling team, he's on the football team, this particular project meant a lot to him. He also lives quite close to this particular site, and-
About a mile away.
I think he feels, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's more, a little bit more of the underused parks in, in this town.
I believe so, yeah.
And, and he thought that this would help bring a lot, maybe a little bit more people there. He did, you know, he has done some due diligence, and he's gone to, he did meet with the rec department, and he, there was a lot of suggestions, where are we gonna put it? And we were very concerned. We were like, well, we really want to put it in the place that's easiest to dig, dig the hole, so. He did go to, um, a few of the places. We kind of, you know, he, we, he pounded in a fence post in a couple of the places. It seems like this place is a good place to dig a hole. We hope we don't have too much trouble on that part, but I guess you don't really know until, until you start. And the process on our end, just from the scouting perspective, is this proposal makes him do a lot of work and really goes through every single, the, the thing that most scouts, Eagle Scouts say is that just like, oh, I didn't know I had to do this much of work. And it just walks you through every possible part to try to get him to be as prepared as possible. And in addition to presenting to you and to the rec department, he also has to present to the troop committee and get approval. And then he also has to submit it to council and get their approval. So we welcome all of your questions, all of your suggestions, and again, you are the beneficiary for, so if there's anything that you wanted, then it's kind of up to Thomas to take that into consideration and see if he can integrate that back into his project. But there're gonna be at least two other committees asking a lot of tough questions, too. And so hopefully by the, that, that's supposed to mean by the time of execution that he's thought through every part of the process. And just wanted to get back to your question. In general, once the project's done, there isn't any, like, maintenance, like, we, there's not, that's not like, kind of like, part of it. It's, it's a one-time project. If there's anything that you can suggest that would maybe reduce the maintenance or improve the longevity or anything like that, we would take that into consideration. And we could certainly ask the troop, but I'm not expecting that they would come back and do it like a maintenance. It's just not a standard, usual part of the project. That's all.
Mr. Chair, can I have one last question that I, I was, I thought of while I was sitting here? Do we have any concerns that it's just grass underneath and not like a mulch or a pad or anything?
With the concrete, not as much. That's why I'd want our engineer, once you've gotten all the approvals that you need, just to double check. But not necessarily.
Okay.
My apologies for interrupting, but by engineer, do you mean Paul Welcome, like drill inspector or?
No, we have an actual engineer that works for the town.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's just the thing to make sure, because it could be that in normal circumstances, you wouldn't need to have anything under there. If there are kids there, they don't always use things the way that's appropriate. So we want to make sure that it's, it's safety for anybody that, that's, that could possibly be using it. And that's where, if we're working collaboratively with you, we can, we can work through some of those.
I also noticed that the, um, elementary school, it's just grass underneath the workout, the equipment. I just wanted to point that, yeah.
Yep. Excellent. Well, do we need to, you want to, do you have a motion prepared for this or?
Do you want me to make one, and then you can correct it?
Yeah, if you just made a motion to approve the request for the use of the land, that would be sufficient.
Subject to comment and direction from town engineer, rec director, and Colin.
Yes.
I second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Select person Cohane.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor. That carries five zero zero. Thank you. Appreciate it for coming in.
Thank you. Good job.
Good luck with the project. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can just, so what will happen is you can work with either Kat, the town manager's office. I think Colin will give you some contact info.
Okay.
And coordinate who to talk to and timing and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, so he has a project proposal, and for him to be able to move forward, he has to have a signature on the proposal, but if you're not there yet.
Yeah, that was-
Yeah, no, I, we can give, Kat, do you want to see if Colin will sign? I don't, I don't know what it is. You don't want our signature. You want the town manager's signature.
Yeah, whoever represents the benefits here.
Yeah. We, we, he's in charge.
Colin will sign off on it. Yeah.
He's in charge. He'll get it.
So Colin will give you his information.
If he doesn't, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right. Seven C, Parley Farms, one-day liquor entertainment licenses. Jackie?
Thank you, packet. This evening, you will file two one-day liquor license applications and two entertainment application. Ninety-five Farwell Road, Tinsborough, for the end of the season, unfortunately, Harvest Festival. On October twenty-first and October twenty-second. The applicant is also requesting a one-day entertainment license for both Saturday and Sunday from ten a.m. until four p.m. for a vocalist with guitar, as they did at their previous festivals that they have had. This event will be similar again to the August and September Harvest Festivals that were approved by the sport. The applicant anticipates approximately two hundred and fifty guests at the event and has TIP certified servers for the event also. No alcohol will be allowed outside the property nor served to individuals under the age of twenty-one. All applicable hearing fees have been paid. In the asked, relevant departments for comments, there were no adverse comments at this time.
Okay, I'll open up the board for questions. Just in, just for my clarification, this is two days. Is, are they having two days? Or is it a day and then a, a rain date?
No, they are having two days. I asked about a rain date. There was no rain date indicated, so I believe this is probably the end.
Okay, because I did see on the applications, there was a lot of Saturday, but not, I didn't see one for, I maybe just- It's, it's buried. It's, it's, it's at the end of it. So there's one for Saturday and one for- Got it. Okay, I got it. Perfect. Okay. All right. Questions from the board? Mr. Cohane, any questions, comments?
No questions.
Mr. Schneider?
No questions, Chair. If I'm in town, I'd love to go to it.
No, no questions.
I, I don't have any questions. I know that they've had prior events recently before, and it sounds like they were successful. And I think they have a pretty good idea of how many people are gonna be there at these, so I think we're, we're good to go. So I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board approve the applications for a one-day beer and wine license for Parley Farms of ninety-five Farwell Road for Saturday, October twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-three, and Sunday, October twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, from eleven a.m. through four p.m. and the corresponding entertainment licenses as presented for ten a.m. to four p.m. each day.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any-
Just to clarify, I'm sorry, that is for malt beverages. I don't know if that makes a difference.
You good?
Yeah, we're good.
Um, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
Mr. Schneider?
In favor? In favor.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. That carries five zero zero. Okay. Now we've got old business.
I think they're sticking around for the school.
That's fine. I just wanted, I, I know that there was like a seven-thirty thing that was going on. All right. Old business, Washville Landscape Request. We have some follow-up information. Take us through it, Colin.
This board may remember that at their meeting on August thirtieth, it reviewed a request from the Washville Car Wash to amend their landscaping plan to remove grass and instead replace it with a pollinator garden in partnership with the colony in Tinsborough. The board discussed the request and appeared to be generally supportive. However, the board did request that both the Planning Board and Conservation Commission weigh in before granting the permission, including your packet tonight is the original request, as well as an email from Conservate, from our conservation agent and the town planner, confirming that both boards were supportive of the request. If there's no additional questions from the board, the board could consider granting that approval, having satisfied the original request.
Follow-up questions from the board? Nope. I'm glad that they, we, we got what we needed on that. I, I know that they opened and have, seems like they've done a great job so far in getting the word out there. So this sounds like a, a nice innovative way to leverage that land, so I'm totally on board. Can I get a motion?
I move that the select board approve the landscape design request for Washville Car Wash on Middlesex Road as presented.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. That carries five zero zero. Our fun one, the Fall Town Meeting Warrant. All right. Do you want to, do you want to tell us what we have to consider, and then we can talk process?
Absolutely. So there are three items related to the warrant that the board will need to consider this evening. The first is to vote to close the warrant. The second would be to post the individual articles. As you'll see, there are ten articles, three of those being citizens petitions, which have been certified by the town clerk. And then finally, the board, if is prepared to do so, would vote either to recommend or not recommend the specific articles. The draft that was included in your packet has been reviewed by legal counsel. Legal counsel provided feedback, and minor grammatical corrections were made to Articles one through seven, which are the town-sponsored articles. Articles eight, nine, and ten, which are the citizen petition, as required by law, are put in the warrant exactly as they were sent to us. No grammar changes, no spelling changes, nothing. I know that the board has seen most of these articles before. There are, I don't know how the board wants to do this. If they want, I can run through what, what has changed.
So let's, let's talk process first. So we, we need to close the warrant. I think that should be fairly easy for us to do. We need to vote to place the individual articles. And then the recommendations on each. So I think that there's a couple of questions. So relative to- So relative to, um, placing the articles, there is, I would like to have us consider the order of the articles, just because, um, in mass law, you can, uh, have some revotes and I, and my, I'd like us to consider taking the citizens petitions to happen first and then have the school being last, so that the votes there, people have to stick around. But that's, that's probably the most controversial item that's there. I, I don't know how people feel about that, so.
Can you say that again? You want to take, so the last three that are currently eight, nine, and ten, you would want them to be one, two, and three?
Correct. So the, here's the challenge, in the past, we have, so historically, there have been very few citizens petitions. Um, so we don't run into these types of things. Where we've got three, there may be some discussion. The concern is that if we do those after, and we ran into this the last time, where there was a, I think it was the DPW or something, people are going to want to, um, look to do a revote. You, you can vote and then they can call for a revote. It requires two-thirds majority of the people that are there. The concern is that what happens is people go, they vote for their thing, and they leave. And there's a, a concerted effort to have certain people stay so that they can change the outcome of a vote that's already been, uh, done. I don't want to see that type of thing happen and look at it by saying, how do we avoid that? And we could just have the school be last. And there's a couple of ways that we can do it. We can have it so that you have it just be the last article and have the, the other six articles, then the three citizens petitions, and then the school. Or we could do the citizens petitions first, get through those, and then do our regular business. I don't have any, the only thing that I think we should do is, um, try to have the school vote last. That's it. Everything else doesn't really, I, I, I'm open to anything that the board decides. So I'll open that up for discussion, how about that?
Chair, I, I would agree with you. I would also prefer to see the three citizen petitions be lumped together and put at the beginning, because I think the discussion and, um, around those are going to be very similar, right? It's a similar type concern. It'll be, there'll be similar comments, I believe. So I think you, I think you might be able to get those out of the way relatively quickly. But I would be in favor of putting those at the beginning. And then, you know, as, as we've well know, articles, you know, right now, Articles one, two, three, four, um, or one, two, three are very quick, right? They're just, you know, just re-appropriating some money, um, transferring some funds. But I think we could get out, we could get through, you know, six of those articles in short order.
Further discussion, uh, Mr. Ca, Mr. Cohane, I know you're, you're on the phone. Any thoughts on order of the articles?
I'll go with what Matt Schneider just said. Um, I, I like that idea and we've seen too many times where they do revotes. So I also agree that the school should go last, uh, to make sure there's no re-votes.
Okay. Mr. Moran?
I'm in favor.
Select person, Calabocas, any thoughts, concerns?
So I'm in favor of having the middle school go last. I am just pondering whether the citizens petitions should go directly before then, because I think you could have the same argument for the citizens petitions that we have for the middle school.
There would be a revote?
If certain groups wanted to wait longer to revoke.
You mean after the middle school vote?
No, middle school will go last. I, I think we're all in agreement that middle.
Middle school goes last, but you had concern that if we put the citizens petitions first, that.
Oh, well, people are going to stay for the middle school anyway.
It, that's, that's what, that's what we think.
Yeah, no, I think, yes, I think that's a good way to do it. We can tackle all three of the citizens petitions first, then go in this order, just as is, with the middle school being last.
I, I'm hearing some consensus, so, um, Colin, what we would be talking about is what you have listed as eight, nine, and ten would be one, two, and three, and then the others get pushed down. And Colin, I, there, there's no issues from your perspective if we reorder things?
Nope, no, no issues from my perspective. The select board owns the warrant, so you can, uh, if that's what the board is going to do, I'm going to ask Kat while we go through them to reprint clean copies. Yeah.
Okay. So I guess, um, so that's the placing of the articles. Um, and we'll do some formal votes on that. And then the recommendations on the articles, um, typically, we, we have not in the past voted to recommend or not recommend citizen petitions. My understanding is that there's no reason why we couldn't. The concern I have and the reason I, I want to float this to the board is there may be some things that, um, if we don't say anything, people are going to think, well, nobody pays attention and, you know, oh, I guess they don't really care one way or the other. So I guess we can look at each one of those if, if we would like to vote on any of the citizens petitions. And we don't have to vote on every one, we could just vote on certain ones if we so chose. But I don't know what people thought about that. And if, so basically, what I'm getting at from procedural standpoint is I, I think what we should do is close the warrant, place them in the order that, that we have now. And then on each one of them, for each of the seven that we're placing, we're going to vote to recommend or not recommend, we'll do that. And then the other three, we can decide at that point in time whether we want to recommend them.
Mr. Chair, I, I just question, I was just reviewing the, uh, council, uh, email.
Yes.
Because I read it earlier and I was making sure I read it correctly. And so I don't know if there's any discussion on that, that we're going to.
Yes.
Talk either now or at town meeting?
Yes.
Good. That's all.
Yeah, I, yes. I, I think, one, we, we should be talking about it now.
Yep.
Um, there may be some, some things that we should be talking about. Um, and, and we can talk about this when we do the recommendations as to what we want to say before town meeting and then during town meeting, just to make sure that everybody understands what, what, you know, what the legal review is on, on some of these things. But yes, I, I think that we shall raise that. So if we're good on that process, and Mr. Cohane, you, you probably can't see it, but there's a lot of head nodding here, so, um, are you fine with that, going through that process?
No, I, I hear very loud and clear, Eric. No, I hear it loud and clear.
You, you hear the head nods? Excellent. Okay, so, um, so why don't we, can we vote to close the warrant? That these are the articles that we're going to consider? So I'll take a motion in closing the warrant, how about that?
I move that the select board close the warrant as presented.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
Mr. Schneider.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor. That carries five zero zero, we have warrant closed. Okay, let's vote to place the articles, starting with the new Article One, which is what was a citizen petition for limitation to real estate tax increase, is the name. So, um, what we're doing for these, as Colin alluded to, is we would be placing these as written. We, we can't change them. And so the, I, I guess the, the thing relative to that is, does anybody have any? We, there really isn't a, um, I guess it is within our purview to not place the articles, to not place an article, um, but under mass law, if they have more than a hundred signatures, which these have.
Correct.
They should go on the, on the warrant. So I think we place it as is, as Article One. Does anybody have any objections to that?
No.
I guess, to that end, can we just place all of them? So it's going to go, what you have previously listed as eight, nine, and ten go in as one, two, and three. And then what was one through seven will go in as four through ten. And the school will end up being ten.
Sending emails now.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, it, it sounds like we can just place them in that mechanism without going through each one, placing them individually.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Right.
So I will entertain a motion to place them in, in that way. And then we'll talk recommendations after that. Is that good?
Okay. Um, I move that the select board place the warrant articles as presented, with the citizens petitions going first and the middle school funding authorization going last.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
Mr. Schneider.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor. All right. That carries five zero zero, we have the articles placed. Let's talk.
Yes.
Recommendations. So the first one, the citizen petition, limitation to real estate tax increase. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Colin, could you take us through council's review of this article, um, in summary? I think he provided a summary, we could, we could have him read the whole detail, but I, with the exception of select person, Calabocas, it, it's, it's all legal things.
It's all legal, legal jumble.
And Mr. Chair, if it's all right with you, the, the town council's opinions on what are now Articles one and two.
Yes.
Are the same, so I'll take them both the same.
Thank you.
Essentially, these petitions and are, the, the summary is, town council's opinion is that both Articles one and Article two would not be deemed legal by the attorney general's office. And so folks that are listening at home know, town council reviews to let the board know about the exposure. Ultimately, the attorney general's office reviews any article that goes before town meeting. So just because our town council says they're likely unenforceable or illegal, it's not like that our town council's making that decision, the attorney general will decide. And then the reason that Articles one and two appear to be illegal is because they essentially change the function of town meeting. Town meeting is the body authorized under mass general law for our form of government to set appropriations, not the ballot. Adding language in there that you must obtain a quorum of twenty-five percent doesn't negate the fact that town meeting, as long as it meets the legal quorum, is able to consider funding mechanisms. Um, for reference, town council noted that a twenty-five percent quorum would end up being something like twenty-five hundred residents, which certainly in my time in Tingsboro, correct if I'm wrong, any, anybody that's been here longer, isn't possible. So for that reason, town council expects that the attorney general's office will deem these not legal. I did also just want to note that there are already under mass general law limitations to how much real estate taxes can increase, that's the whole Prop two and a half. That's why when the town underwent the debt exclusion for the middle school, it required both a town meeting vote and a vote at the election. So those protections do exist. And as it relates to the citizen's petition, um, on the limitation of a project approval, practically, setting aside the legality of it, practically, that would mean that any project, like a roads project, which is a combination of operating funding somewhere in like the three hundred thousand dollar range, and sometimes capital, and sometimes four to five hundred thousand dollars of direct chapter ninety funding, which can only be used for roads, that would require basically any roads project to go to a town ballot as well. So practically, they would be challenging. Protections already exist relative to real estate tax increases. And town council's opinion is that because they sidestep the authority of town meeting, they would be unenforceable by the AG.
Thank you. So further discussion on, um, Article Eight. Do we feel comfortable, uh, making a recommendation? Yeah, no, Article One, yes, thank you. So Article One, um, does, how do people feel about, um, taking a vote on whether we recommend the article?
I'd vote not to recommend it.
I, I'm also very comfortable not recommending it when we have such strong, um, advice from council that it is not in the legal sphere, right? I think that not recommending it is something that we should do. Yeah.
I would agree, I, I would agree.
And, and Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
You know, and I, I just think we're setting a precedent. Once we start voting on one, then we really should be voting on all. And the precedent has really been that we haven't voted on any citizen's petitions. I know there hasn't been that many, uh, but we, I don't believe we've ever voted, uh, you know, on one. So I, I think to not recommend, I think is the prudent measure, even though kind of, kind of feel like I, I would like to vote on it sometimes, but, you know, I think we, if we set precedent, then we should always do it. So I, I'm in favor of not voting on this.
So hang on a second. Mr. Cohane, I think, I think we're misunderstanding. I think what I've heard is, um, folks here feeling comfortable voting against the article and, and saying that we specifically don't recommend it versus making no recommendation.
Oh, okay, it's hard to hear sometimes.
Yeah.
Over, over the phone.
Yeah, and paraphrasing, I think that there are going to be some citizens petitions that are just so, um, they're, they're so far out there. My concern on this, you know, I look at it with, um, I, I think that there are elements of this that say, look, we should make sure that we've got enough people voting on things. And I think that getting people to town meeting and having them participate, we all agree. We've had that in a, as a, um, as a goal. We, we've had that as a stated goal. I think this goes so far beyond that, that you're, you're never going to get twenty-five percent of, of registered voters there. And that my concern, as I look at it and say, the fact that we might have to debate this because people think that we're not even, you know, we're, we're hands-off on this and let, let it be discussed on the floor, um, it frankly is a waste of people's time. I think that there should be things where, and, and as select person, Calabocas said, it's not like it's, it's kind of a gray area. Council has said pretty emphatically, and we may even have something from, official from the AG by that, that says, look, this isn't, we're never going to accept this. I just don't, I know people, they're concerned. And if I end up spending fifteen minutes debating each one of these articles at town meeting, it's forty-five minutes, well, half an hour, we're just going to do the first two. That's time that people say is, is really valuable. So I, I agree that it's hard to set a precedent and that we, you know, we, we might be in a situation where we're breaking that. I personally am fine with saying, I'm, there's going to be some that I have a feeling on and, and I feel that strongly that we shouldn't recommend it. And there's going to be some where it's sit there and go, you know what, let's let the people decide. And, and, you know, that, I personally will, I'm not that absolute. So that's where we were, Mr. Cohane. I don't know if, if you had any, would that change your thinking at all?
No, just proceed. Uh, I'll, 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 I'll agree with that, I just, you know, and it comes to precedent sometimes. I, I, I try to think it through here. But if everybody feels strongly, you should vote on this, then, then I will vote on it.
And you had some thoughts, I didn't want to.
Um, no, I, I, I agree that, I, I would vote against Articles one and two because it's in contravention of the way, our, our town form of government, right? So, um, and I, and I think if, if, if called upon, if people ask us, why are you voting against it? I think it's a very short and simple answer.
It's illegal.
Well, it's illegal and it's, it's against the way that a town government is run. We're not asking people to change that at, at this town meeting.
Especially when there might only be a couple hundred people there. It, it, you know, they want to change how town government is run with, you know, not a ballot, but anyway.
Right.
Okay, so I'm hearing that, um, we, we would like to make a recommendation. So, um, I guess we need a, a motion to not recommend or recommend against Article One. Can I get a, um, a motion for that?
Can we take them together, so we can motion?
It's up to you. I, I mean, typically, we keep them separate, but I have no qualms in putting them together because they are that close.
Let's motion, I move that the select board recommend against placing article, uh, recommend against recommending.
Against, yep, that's it.
Article one and two.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
So I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor, that carries five zero zero against. Okay. Article three, which I think is different.
Yes.
Um, and coming from a different place. And so can you take us through council's review of that one?
Yes. Yes. Council's review on Article Ten, there's two things to point out.
Article, sorry, Article Three. We're going to do that.
I'm going to get it right. On Article Three, town council, their initial review of this is one that this is essentially a non-binding referendum, and the reason that it's non-binding is because mass general law grants that type of decision to the select board under the way that the town operates, and so town meeting can't circumvent that by making, say, a long-term policy change. So it's not so much a question of legality in that it can't supplant the authority that the laws grant the select board.
Further discussion on that and how we want to take that one because it's different?
I almost look at Article Three as a sort of non-binding referendum, right? It's a sort of a sense perhaps of the people at the meeting of what they would like to see happen, but to your point, Colin, it's not binding on the select board.
Mr. Chair, if I may also add to that.
Please.
I think that is great clarity from council. That's what I was hoping we would get, and we would get in open meeting where there's a lot of people here. That's the point I wanted to get to. And that's why I may have said things or previous meetings or whatever, but my whole idea is that it needed legal review. And not being an expert on the public safety stuff, I can certainly weigh in on my thoughts, but that's well-received legal counsel. Thank you.
Select person Calabocas?
For this one, I think because it is a citizens' petition and because there is no illegality to it, I personally would prefer not to recommend for or to recommend against it, just to have it placed.
Select person Cohane?
I have lots of thoughts on this one. But again, you know, maybe since it's not considered illegal, my first inclination would be to not vote on this. But I think this has brought a lot of passion out there from the residents, and you know, I think the select board, you know, should talk to our police chief and fire chief, because that's one of the recommendations I heard earlier, you know, maybe before our next meeting to discuss this a little bit further.
Yeah, I totally, I want to echo both of what you said. So I agree. I think where this is not, it's not a legal thing, I don't think that we need to vote to recommend or not recommend on this one. I do think that there are additional discussions that are there. As council has pointed out, the authority is within us. That doesn't mean that we're going to do it in a vacuum and put our blinders on, and you know, that was never the intent at the beginning. So we'll continue down that path, but it sounds like we've got agreement that we're not going to recommend or for or against, and that we'll just, the warrant will be placed and we won't say anything about this article. Based on that, I don't think we need to make a motion on that one. Is everybody good with that? Anybody disagree?
Agreement.
Okay. Now, Article Four. We're going to get this figured out. So this is the one relative to transfer of funds from free cash. I'm going to hand this one off to Colin.
And I'm going to leave. No. So Article One is a transfer of funds from free cash. Right off the bat, one thing that you'll notice changed. Did I say one again? Article Four, I'm sorry. Article Four, one of the things you'll notice off the bat that changed from the last time you saw this warrant is we've removed the $250,000 transfer to cover the snow and ice deficit from FY '23, and the simple reason for that is when the Department of Revenue certifies our free cash from fiscal year '23, because this transfer didn't happen before we closed our books, DOR is already subtracting that amount from what is available because it needs to cover the deficit. So that has already been addressed as a part of DOR's certification. If we left it on here, you'd essentially be doubling that up and covering a $500,000 deficit. So it's off because it's already being addressed by the free cash. One item that I want to put on the board's radar that won't change the board's, or shouldn't change the board's ability to vote this evening, but just as a heads up, we are currently still working toward the free cash certification that would allow the board to move forward with this article. There are a series of reasons, largely it's the quick turnaround between when this ended up being certified a week or so after your May town meeting, and now us trying to do another certification in October. Generally, we would do it closer to when you appropriate this stuff in the spring. That said, there are a handful of items on here that should we not be able to come to a complete free cash certification ahead of your October 24th meeting, we may ask the board to amend on the floor of town meeting. Those are the OPEB trust fund contribution, the capital asset stabilization, the special ed stabilization, and the FinCom reserve fund. The reason for all of those, with the exception of the FinCom reserve fund, which I'll come back to, those are all just deposits into the stabilization accounts, and this warrant does not include any appropriations. So if we're unable to certify the free cash to include those in here, the only result would be that when it came time to spring town meeting, you would be depositing more than you generally would. So it would appear different, but because you're not seeking any appropriations out of those, there's no time crunch to getting those done. On the FinCom reserve fund, this wasn't included in the fiscal year '24 operating budget as it generally had been in the past, and so it's not an urgent item for us. The reason we're now forced to decide between urgent and not so urgent is we are on a time crunch to get our data to the Department of Revenue in time to certify. The more money we want certified will require more level of work from our accounting department, and so we are having to play a bit of an intentional game of figuring out, here's where they agreed we were at in May, two weeks after your town meeting, and here's where we need to be to fund what we would consider the time-sensitive items on your warrant, which is the 200 grand for the roads program that was approved by last year's capital plan, the 60 grand for the abatement and demolition of the 180 Lakeview Ave building, and the $455,000 reimbursement to the school department. That's a two-year reimbursement, and so delaying that any longer would have an impact on the school department. So all of that is to say that these items were on your warrant before. I'm hoping that we get all the stuff we need to the Department of Revenue in time to certify all of your free cash. If we have to play the game of figuring out just the bare minimum to make this work for October, those are the items that we would delay until your spring town meeting because they have no immediate impact on the town's operating budget.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the reason that we have to do, so some of them we have to do.
Correct.
Right, just because we've got to get those addressed, but we need to get it done because the next article, we'd really be crippled because we couldn't do that one at all unless we had some of these things with the free cash certified.
Correct. The Department of Revenue, for lack of a better word, is holding Article Two up, Article Five up.
Yeah.
The sewer enterprise fund retained earnings. Their retained earnings, everyone agrees that they are what they are, they were included in your May town meeting, most of the money to fund the sewer budget was approved then. This was not approved because at the time, our free cash wasn't certified, and the Department of Revenue won't release their retained earnings certification until they also release a free cash certification for the town. So that's why it is, as Mr. Eldridge pointed out, so important that we do get some level of free cash certified because it will release that full amount that the sewer department planned for in their fiscal year '24 budget that's outlined in Article Five.
And the other thing that I think is important to note, that the reconciliation is that we have more money than what is in there.
Correct.
So it's kind of like bank error in our favor, so it's one of those things, we have money, we have more money than we thought we had, but you can't appropriate it until you know exactly where it came from, and that's what has to get certified from DOR. So it's not like things are a mess.
Correct.
There's some accounting work that needs to get done in there, so we might have to have some flexibility. So I guess I'll open it up for further questions on that. I guess we'll start with Mr. Cohane.
I understand what Colin said, so I don't want any questions.
Excellent.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
I only recently started to understand, don't worry.
Thank you for the explanation.
No questions, thank you.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and I know that, I'm hoping that this is very clear, that we had an issue during our annual town meeting, we had another issue, we can't have a problem with the free cash. So we need to figure that out. I think if we need to have a third party come and help with some of those things, we should do that. So maybe we'll have a discussion at our next meeting and if we need to do it in executive session, but I think we need to talk with finance and, not finance committee, but the finance director and make sure that we've got these things in because this needs to be tight.
Agreed.
All right, so Article Four, you want us to, it's as is, we may be making changes on the floor, now we need to just vote to recommend?
Correct.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion relative to that.
Move that the select board recommend Article Four, transfer of funds from free cash.
Second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
I'm also in favor, we recommend that five zero zero. Article Five, sewer enterprise fund retained earnings transfer. We already talked about it. This is a standard item that would typically be in annual town meeting.
Correct.
I will entertain a motion relative to that one.
A move that the select board recommend Article Five, sewer enterprise fund retained earnings transfer.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on it? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
I'm also in favor, that is recommended five zero zero. Article Six, appropriation CPC funds. Explained, please.
Absolutely. This is a request from, or this is a recommendation from the community preservation committee to fund $250,000 to cover a construction, the remaining construction of the Winslow Road footbridge. The committee met last week and voted unanimously to support this request. That project is a mix of an original $200,000 CPC appropriation, a $250,000 Mass Works grant, and an $80,000 earmark from the legislature. To date, all of the design work has been completed. You've all seen the bridge sitting on Winslow Road. The remaining contract, which is actually out to bid right now and will be due a week before town meeting, is the remaining site work, the construction of the viewing deck that will go in overlooking the dam, and then the installation of this bridge. CPC was supportive of the request. This is kind of what they consider the capstone of the town center and aligns with a much older town center master plan that included expanding the usable area over there by the dam.
Open up the board for questions. Mr. Cohane, we'll start with you.
No questions, I support this.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
No, and the only thing is CPC was amenable to us asking for more money from them.
Correct.
Because we had perhaps underestimated what some of the costs were going to be. I don't want people to think that CPC didn't, they came in and helped because they see this as a, and I totally agree, the center looks great, that area that's there in the triangle, getting that done, I think, is going to look fantastic. I think this is a good use of 250,000 of CPC funds, and I'm grateful to them for coming to us with that request. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
A move that the select board recommend Article Six, appropriation community preservation committee fund.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor, we are recommending that five zero zero. Article Seven, town general bylaw updates, appointments. Colin, did you want to explain that? And my understanding is council did have some recommendations to shrink this down a little bit?
Correct. This article would, as has been discussed before the board before, limit the elected service on the finance committee so that you could not serve on the school committee, the select board, or the board of library trustees. If the board wanted to reduce the size, we could eliminate sections two, three, and four because there's no direct amendments. I will note that the articles are already printed for you to sign tonight, so that may be a moot point. I did try it without them in there, I just think that there was too many references to things that didn't exist, and so I thought for clarity, given that this is changing the structure of an elected board, that I would leave it in it, but Mr. Eldridge is correct, that's the one comment council had.
And it's only three sections.
Correct.
As much as I don't want to kill trees and am concerned about that, I don't think that's the end of the world. So with that, I'll open up to questions. We did talk about this one last time, I can't remember which, I mean, I know we've gone through this one, and that's how we ended up with this. Any further discussion, Mr. Cohane?
No further, well, we did, as you said, we did talk about it last time. We thought this was a good compromise. It's pointed out to us that this particular bylaw was, you know, had been out there for a while, and you know, it definitely needed to be changed, and we thought that, you know, if somebody from the finance committee was appointed or elected, these three boards, the select board, school committee, and board of trustees would be the ones that they shouldn't, you know, be a part of. So I think this was a really good compromise that we came up with.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, any?
No, I know we talked about this last time, and we were concerned last time about serving on other boards that had large financial, you know, commitments or requirements. That's why we had said, you know, school committee, board of trustees. No, I'm fine with the way it's drafted right now.
No further comment?
Yeah, I mean, I think at some point, like we did with the zoning bylaws, as you have some of these things that happen over the course of time, we're going to have to make some periodic changes. This one, I think, is one that was raised and is there. There may be others, and we'll hit them as they come. You know, I don't, I think this is a realistic change that is important because we struggle to get people to come out and run, and we have open positions still, so I look at it and say, you know, we can't afford to be really restrictive. There are some things that are there. It is also important to note that there is government oversight outside of the town. The state has state ethics review, there's all sorts of mechanisms if there are some things where people are concerned that perhaps, you know, something nefarious is going on, and that isn't why we're looking at this, it's just more of a bookkeeping type of thing. But it makes sense to me.
And I would say further, you know, maybe there will be some discussion on the town floor about, well, shouldn't we be more prescriptive of listing all these other various committees that people shouldn't be on, shouldn't be on CPC, shouldn't be on, you know, whatever? And I think, you know, my answer at least would be, I don't want to prevent people from serving on other committees. If there is any type of a conflict, you recuse your vote, and that's the way you handle that. It's not by keeping people off committees.
Good point, yep. Did I hear something? Okay. Well, I guess based on that, if this, I will entertain a motion to recommend?
A move that the select board recommend Article Seven, town general bylaw updates appointments.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
I'm also in favor, that carries five, we are recommending five zero zero. All right. Article Eight, town general bylaw addition, sealer of weights and measure fees. This is controversial.
A little-known function of town government is ensuring that gas pumps are accurate and scales are accurate. This would be the addition of an article, addition of a section within the town's general bylaws that would establish the fee structure for the sealer of weights and measures program. This is a, we recently joined NIMCOG's regional sealer of weights and measures, previously we were doing it on our own, and so there was no discussion of fees in the bylaws. This would allow us to set those fees as presented here. And again, this is for businesses that have scales, gas pumps, anything where they're quantifying what your cost is, this allows a third party to make sure that they're accurate and you're being charged what you should be.
Excellent, any questions or comments on this one? I'll entertain a motion then.
I move that the select board recommend Article Eight, Town General Bylaw Addition, Sealer of Weights and Measures Fees.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor, we are recommending that one five zero zero. Article Nine, Approved Prior Year Bills.
This is a housekeeping item that appears on most town meeting warrants. Mass General Law prohibits the town from paying bills that were incurred outside of the current fiscal year. So in this case, these are bills where the service or item was received in fiscal year twenty-three, but for a multitude of reasons, maybe the invoice didn't get to us in time, it might have gotten lost in the shuffle. These invoices remain unpaid. This is not an additional appropriation. These funds would be paid out of the fiscal year twenty-four budget, but because they were paid outside of the fiscal year town meeting by a nine tenths vote, we'll have to approve us paying them. You can see who the vendor is, the amount, the department, and then also the account that it's coming out of.
Any further discussion or questions? Did we, uh, did we let the moderator know that this one's gonna be on there in need of nine tenths?
Figured we'd keep the nine tenths part for surprise, no, but we will. Sure.
Uh, I will entertain a motion on that.
Move that the select board approve Article Nine, Approved Prior Year Bills.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor, we are recommending that five zero zero. Last one, do we even need, no, just kidding. The last one is the school, that is art, now Article Ten. And I think we have to, even though we've signed off on everything, we still need to vote on the recommendation relative to that.
Yes, just a couple of quick things on this. You'll note that similarly to your Article Twenty-Eight on the May third, twenty twenty-two town meeting, the actual dollar amount of the project is not allowed, you can't include it in the warrant article. That said, this references the same square footage that the original vote included to show that the scope hasn't changed, and it references the payment percentage split between the town and the MSBA. I also include it in your packet because this is what will be of interest to folks at the meeting. Your motion does reference the budget increase. This has been reviewed by our council, it's also been reviewed by legal council at the MSBA. The MSBA had no issues with the article and had some minor clerical revisions to the draft motion, which again is included in your packet.
Any further questions?
I just have a question.
Please.
I don't know what the word aknawne is. The town, aknawne grant approved by, it's towards the bottom of it. If you look at the Word document, it comes up as a misspell, I just don't know what that word is.
Oh, I.
Should be acknowledges.
Acknowledges, which, is it in the Word document?
It's in both.
Oh, interesting, I think it's resolved.
Maybe I got a different version.
I just opened up the Word one just to have fun.
I think it's resolved in the PDF.
I saw, lawyer, you know what it is?
In your, in the warrant that we printed, and in the PDF version in your packet, that has been fixed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I've got it in the PDF.
I'm just making sure, I'm looking at the Word, that's awful, Word version.
My guess is he took a PDF and brought it into Word and it, yeah, it sometimes happens.
That was my only question, thank you. I'm a big spell.
Hey, I mean, you shouldn't have any typo in something that that important, right? Okay. Any other discussion before I entertain a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
A move that the select board recommend Article Ten, Increased Middle School Funding Authorization.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cohane.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor, and we are recommending that one five zero zero.
If I may provide clarity to Mr. Moran's point.
Yes.
According to Google Track Changes, somebody logged in as Tinsborough Select Board deleted part of the the article during the meeting, so it's just.
Oh, it's a typo?
Someone that's logged in right now, deleted it when they were looking. That's why we were laughing.
So someone here messed up.
For failure, yeah.
We're gonna mess with you during these, oh, Colin, they didn't, they didn't tell you that during the hiring process? That that's what we do?
I was on the computer, so it was me.
Okay, um, let's see, relative to, so we're we're done relative to the warrant.
Correct.
Logistics-wise, we, do we have a moderator?
You do, logistics-wise, Mr. Bill Grammer has agreed, actually enthusiastically, he shared, to participate. I've double-checked with town council, we've got the language that the town clerk will have to read to have the town meeting elect him to be the temporary moderator, and then she'll swear him in at the start of the meeting.
Okay. All right, we'll have other logistics that we can talk about. One item of business before we go to select board reports is we didn't go to the the town manager report.
Yes, thank you. Well, with that, I will take it away.
You thought you were gonna get away with it.
I was waiting for it. Applications for the fiscal year twenty-five senior tax work-off program are now available in the, bless you, in the Tinsborough Public Library, the Council on Aging, the Assessor's Office, and in our office. They're due back to the Assessor's Office by November second. As a reminder, participants can earn up to a fifteen hundred dollar abatement on the real estate taxes in return for one hundred and fifteen hours of service to a town department. MassDOT notified the town last week that they are finally moving forward with finalizing the surplus of and subsequent transfer of the land at eleven Indian Lane, including the single-family home to the Affordable Housing Trust here in Tinsborough. Our town planner and economic development director, Eric Salerno, who works with the trust, has been following up with MassDOT, and we're hoping to get that transfer finalized in the next month or so. Town council has been engaged with legal at MassDOT to make sure that all the transfers and the D documents are done correctly. Following questions regarding the scope of work for the originally planned, I'm calling it limited abatement at one eighty Lakeview Ave, as well as the possible additional funding for a full demo of the building. I canceled the previous bid for the abatement that bid probably a month ago now. The project is ready to rebid with some additional scope clarity if town meeting did fail to appropriate. That's sixty thousand dollars, but my logic was if we're gonna have the full sixty thousand dollars combined with what this board approved, we would be able to do a full abatement as opposed to some abatement, sealing some areas, and then potentially having to redo that. So, you know, I've spoken with Allison Page, and she talked to Mike Knight, and one of the things that they were concerned about there is space. For reference, that building had no utilities to the, to it until twenty twenty, when we had the utilities turned back on for a short-term lease that we did in the building. Right now, it's not usable, there is electricity to the building, but the water is turned off because of substantial plumbing. So in preparing for town meeting, I did speak to them, their big concern is storage, and so there are ways that if town meeting appropriates that money, we would be able to provide them more permanent storage. They would ideally like permanent bathroom structures, which isn't out of the question, there is already plumbing to the site. But as they do in other parcels managed by them, there are porta-potties there right now, and that's what they have been using. Even before the damage from the burst pipe, they were not using the building for bathrooms.
Colin, before you go to the next one, I I do want to make sure, I I heard some rumors at at the the middle school building committee meeting that there are rumors out there that the town is looking to sell off and and close that property, not just the building, but the the softball field and all the others. I can assure people, we have not talked about that, that is not on the plans. That is not something that we're considering, that softball field and that entire complex is important to us. The building was not, and it was failed, and it was unsafe. And so I don't want residents to think that this abatement has anything to do with selling off that property. It's the exact opposite, that if we have buildings that are failed and and we can't maintain them and and they're not there, then we need to put something in there that we can maintain. So when I heard that rumor, I was taken aback, and I was like, I don't know where that came from. So it's really important that people understand that is not, that's not even on the radar for us.
Yep, that's that's important clarity, and on that same topic, as this board knows, at your meeting on the eighteenth, you asked for our office to coordinate soliciting public feedback on the use of public buildings. We've gotten a good amount of feedback so far, and the theme is kind of the same. There are civic groups that need low cost, if if at all cost, space. And so I expect that at a future meeting, we'll have a bigger conversation about that. And there are other buildings that were previously used for that more recently than one eighty Lakeview Ave that this board could consider using. The IT department, media department, and our office are working together to build a new town website, which was funded through a fiscal year twenty-four capital request. We are currently in the design phase, and staff is working to implement, hopefully, the new website by February of twenty twenty-four. The engineering department last week submitted the NIPD's Year Five Annual Report to Mass DEP. The town has been very fortunate to be able to use largely just our in-house staff to manage most aspects of that. We do use consultants for a limited amount of that work, and and our town engineer has been successful in getting college interns to assist with the work as well. The following year, Year Six, is gonna focus on implementing a best-practice management retrofit on town-owned land, and we're hoping to be able to use the parking lot project plan for the police department as that retrofit. I did include in your packet the quarterly report from the library director. It, I won't go through all of it, but just some key metrics from fiscal year twenty-three. They circulated over a hundred and eight thousand items. They added four hundred and fifty-five new library cardholders, and there are now more than ninety-five hundred registered borrowers. And a big thanks to the friends of the library who contributed nearly eight thousand dollars to the library, and that's used on programming, museum passes, and children's books. The Council on Aging was notified last year, last week of their formula grant allocation for the year. It's a sixty-five hundred dollar increase, it's a mix of the way they increase the per-person reimbursement, and also a slight increase in our aging population according to their formula. Our Council on Aging is putting out, probably in the next week or so, a townwide mailer that will go to every mail receiver in Tinsborough that's gonna highlight all of their programs, where they can find the calendar and the services that are available. One of the things that we hear is that people who aren't currently engaged with our Council on Aging would like to know how they can get engaged, and that's what this flyer will do. It covers every aspect, and something like that is funded through the formula grant, not through the town's operating budget. Congratulations to town planner and economic development director Eric Salerno, who spearheaded an application on behalf of the town to the Mass Works Infrastructure Program Grant. We were just notified last week that Tinsborough received a two million dollar grant. That's gonna help with the public-private development going on at the, behind the parking ride at ninety-three Kendall Road. That will feature an installation of a shared driveway, they're gonna bring utilities to the highway garage for a new highway building, and there's all kinds of other site improvements. Ultimately, as they work through the planning board process, there will be a decent-sized warehouse project that is also benefiting, but that's a huge grant. We've been very successful in the past with Mass Works grants, I think in the recent five years, this is our third one. So it's a good program, and Eric spent a lot of time putting that together, so.
How big was that number again?
Two million.
Two million dollars, just wanted to make sure that that was out there.
Two million.
That's a lot of money.
Yes. Last week, the town was notified that we received sixty-six hundred dollars from the recycling dividends program. These funds can be used and have been used in the past to support recycling and sustainability efforts across town. I want to take a minute to just congratulate our health department, the fire department, and the police department for a very well-executed health and safety fair on Saturday. The event was well-attended, featured a touch-a-truck, demonstrations, a helicopter, and dozens of informational booths, including from our own sewer department, conservation office, and the Board of Health. It also featured a flu and COVID vaccine clinic and other free health diagnostics. And on town meeting, we'll host pre-town meeting on Tuesday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, right here in the community room at six thirty PM, to review the warrant articles ahead of the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three town meeting at the elementary school. For those that have never attended, that's where we will give you the information about the articles. You'll have a chance to ask questions, but there are no votes that happen at pre-town meeting, and it's not a place for debate. And then the last thing I'll add that wasn't in here, by Wednesday afternoon, the town meeting page will be fully built out. If you've looked recently, it it's starting to be built out, we'll add all the warrant articles in, we'll add your votes, we'll add the finance committee votes tomorrow night, and our media department is working to coordinate filming short explainer videos, which we've done in the past. So it'll be your one-stop shop to figure out how you may want to vote and what the different articles will do. That was a lot, if there are no questions, Kat.
Thanks, Kat.
Good evening. Many of you probably have noticed, the property at Sherburne Ave, approximately four acres to the right of the Toll Brothers', what would you call it, the, they're like.
Sales office.
Sales office, thank you, has been complete, they finished up on Friday. And staff will be working to prepare bid documents for the second phase that will go out, probably late fall, for a spring start. And bids for the police station parking lot are due on October eighteenth at ten AM. And then bids for the Lower Flint Palm Dam pedestrian project, which is the Britain's, bridge installation in front of the Winslow School area, are due this Wednesday, October fourth. And then lastly, staff plan to release a request for quote for the police station HVAC project this Wednesday, October fourth, and quotes will be due on the eighteenth. And that's all I have.
Excellent, questions from the board? Yes?
Mr. Chair, I have a comment versus a question. I'm I'm interested in just total transparency, and I find the information on this to be so compelling. I know we put it on our website, but there's a whole lot of people in town that don't look at the website. We do get a neighbor-to-neighbor newspaper at every single home in this town, and I'm wondering if there's a way to take this report and just cut and paste it into the neighbor-to-neighbor so that just more people see it, and they just see what's going on in the town, and they can appreciate, you know, all the work that you guys do.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know, does neighbor-to-neighbor charge for certain?
No, it gets paid through ads.
Okay.
So.
For most of the free stuff, there are, there is an opportunity, but I do think, even if it isn't, we should look at tapping into that because it is a, it is something that goes out, people, people pay attention. I mean.
It's an easy place to find information.
And does a great job with it, she's done, you know, for, what, forty years?
Do we dare ask about social media, posting on Facebook?
So it is, it it already does.
I know that, I'm just reiterating, if you could maybe broadcast with those.
Account.
Over communicate, you can never over-communicate this information.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Like, you know, there's always TPS, the school that Flanagan always does, hashtag TPS something.
TPS cares.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I know, I know it's on Facebook and Twitter, I know you guys get it on there. But I think to your point, there are some folks that are not online, and and this information would be important for them. And perhaps that's another thing for us to look at relative to, with the Council on Aging. There are people that aren't getting these messages, how do we, how do we reach them? So I think we had, you had mentioned that before, and I don't think we had, it it didn't come to fruition yet, so I think we need to keep on that, so we'll add that to our list.
Absolutely.
Other, other questions or comments, Mr. Cohane, anything? Okay.
I'm good.
Excellent, all right. So with that, I guess we'll head to select board reports. Well, we'll start with Mr. Cohane, while I have you.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Schneider.
Uh, nothing at this time, Mr. Chair.
Nothing tonight.
Just quickly, a reminder that Zero Waste Day is coming up on Saturday, November fourth. So search your houses, electronics, household goods, clothing, textbooks, bikes, scrap metal, small engines. Go through everything you can, bring it to Zero Waste Day. It's a great event, Saturday, November fourth, nine to twelve.
We'll be there. So just to reiterate, the the health and safety event on Saturday was fantastic. It was great to see everybody, there was a a ton of support between police and fire, and just a great event for the kids. I remem, I, my kids used to go and do the touch-a-truck, and they don't do that anymore, they're too old. But it was good to see, that was a great event. There are, every time I go, there's a lot of things that I learn that our police and fire do to be proactive, and I think, I think we should figure out a way to help get some of that out there on Tinsborough Media and 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 some of those things. I know that we get some of those things, but there's some behind-the-scenes things. I know that we get some of those things, but there's some behind-the-scenes things I don't think people realize between the car seats that they got and put them in. They don't just take yours and put it in. There are some people that can't afford them. And so they, these guys, they work to do some things that are really proactive. And I think it would be great for us to get that message out there because I do think that there are people in the community that may not know that some of these things are available to them. You know, we just have some great public safety folks. Saw the new ambulance, which is in, which is fantastic, the A1. And then the only other thing is there is a Wreaths Across America program. I know Chris Derry, the Veterans Agent, is working on that. And I know that we have a new, that Chief Russell's wife originally was working in other towns to bring that in. And she's like, oh, we need to do something in town. So she started that. They are trying to get a bunch of wreaths. They're still short. I think that there's, they still need about 250 wreaths. There's some volunteers, you know, maybe the Boy Scouts that were here. We could tap into some of those because while their donations for the wreaths are coming in, somebody's gotta place them. So I think that that's a great program. We should figure out how we can help sponsor that. So make sure if you're doing Wreaths Across America that you're selecting. There is one now in Tingsboro, so make sure you get it connected in there. We should, we'll see if we can get that in your report so that, because that's, we still have time. It's December 16th. To make sure that we get that in there. But lots of good stuff happening. So with that, I guess, before I entertain a motion for executive session, we have a meeting of a very short, small agenda meeting on the 17th?
Correct.
Correct? At, here before the pre-town meeting, at 6 o'clock. Our vice chair will be chairing that meeting because I will be traveling for business. And then our next meeting after that is November 6th. Yeah, you have to be here. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that the Select Board go into executive session under Exemption Three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, and the Chair so declares, all public safety unions.
Second that.